I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call please. Mrs. Seaman.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Here.
Dr. Wadley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Conkle. Mr. Canwisheer.
Here.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Buck.
Here.
Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take motion.
The agenda is presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Smith, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for every student. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to do so. Does anyone want to speak? Alright, go ahead, come up. Please state your name, your affiliation with the district, and also if you can, please refrain from using specific names. And if you can keep your thoughts to about three minutes, that would be appreciated.
Very good. Well, my name's Seth Hamilton. I have a kid at Cody, third grade. Just a few things. I just wanted to first of all say thank you for doing the air testing at Cody. I know that there's no requirement to do such things. The communication, there's no requirement for anybody in this room to email me back if I ask a question about anything, so I'm very thankful for some of that. I do wish the whole school had been tested, but I'll take what I can get. And I think for the district too, if a first, second, third grade parent has a concern, you can, you have data, you have a number. You can say, well, we've tested, we've cleaned, we've done this. You can't necessarily do that for fourth, fifth, sixth grade student, parent's concern. But, I just wanted to say thank you. I look forward to continuing this process. I do also want to just mention, in the last three, four months when we've kind of been really hands-on with all this, I've heard multiple parents, some staff, be like, you know, two, three years ago I said something and I was kind of pushed to the side and, you know, a couple of years ago I saw this in my classroom and I was told it's not a big deal. I don't have any facts to back up any of that up, but it is being talked about. And I have even heard some maybe not great things happening at the junior high. Again, I don't have anything to back that up, it's just what I've been told. So, I hope that this is like a good path forward. Maybe PV's like the first district in the state that's like, we're going to have facts for every building, so if there's concerns, we can put those to rest. But anyways, that's my thoughts. Thank you. Appreciate your time and all that you guys do.
Thank you Seth.
I'm Dr. Othlin Hamilton, so I belong with Seth. And I echo Seth's sentiments about thanking you all for what you have done at Cody. It's, it's been a lot of time and effort and resources and we are grateful for that, for sure. On the positive note, just to think about maybe like some behavior issues becoming better because of a nicer environment and a cleaner environment. And then more focus and less sick days, like a lot of positive things that can come from all of this and that, that goes on to staff and that goes on to parents and less letters from principals being sent home because of absences, so just, there's a lot of positive that has come from this and so I just want to point that out too. I know the journey hasn't been super clear, a few bumps. I just want to point out the positives, so thank you guys again. Appreciate it.
Anyone else this evening on the non-agenda item? Alright, I will move on to the board table. And I'll start with you, Mrs. Seaman. Did you have anything this evening? Alright, thank you. Mrs. McEwen? Alright, how was the first day for you?
Great. I got to all the buildings.
Wow, great, great. Alright. Mrs. Kenyon, anything this evening?
No.
Keeping you awake.
Tell you.
No, I'm mixing it up.
Nope, nothing this evening.
Did you say my name?
No, I did not yet. Did you, you had nothing?
Confused, what happened?
No, did you have anything to report out to the board? Like any announcements?
No, I'm sorry, but now I'm distracted. Did you ask him to close the door?
Leland closed the door.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought someone was asking me something. Oh boy. Nope, I'm here and I'm happy.
It's been a long day. Mrs. Ross Kern.
Nothing.
Oh wow.
Hey, thank you.
Uh, Director Smith?
Hello, welcome back everybody to the school year and looking ready, it's a terrific year. We're on the best.
Nothing to add to that.
Alright. Alright, thank you. And Director Wheeler?
Same thing, just welcome everybody back. I had two very happy kids who gave full reports that were very positive, so thank you to all involved.
But only one that would let you take their picture.
Correct. I have one in junior high now.
Director Ayers?
Yes, I had the pleasure of being at Cody this morning and the atmosphere at Cody with all the kids coming back and the teachers, it was, it was so high and, and great to see. And then this afternoon I had the opportunity to be at Hopewell, seeing the kids exit and they were just as happy, so it was great to see them.
Great, thank you. Director Conkle?
Um, I was going to say my favorite thing that I know the school year is starting is sounds of the stadium that the marching band does. And they had to move quickly inside this year. They had to switch it up because of incoming weather. And I am just so impressed with how they can make that shift with so many students, learn these songs with students that are brand new coming in in August. And the band directors are literally standing outside like this. They're not up there. It's, all the students are also leading it and I just think it's such an impressive thing and, to, you know, what they're doing for the younger students. My youngest in fifth grade even said, "This is my favorite thing because I love all the music they play." And so they have a way of bringing band to life and music to life. For those that maybe, you know, I wouldn't say he's musically inclined, but says he would love to do marching band because he loves that music. And the last thing I want to say is, they really embrace, I think, everything that we love about PB School District. Every kid is involved. If you want to play in the band, they have a spot for you. And in particular, this year there was an individual on the cymbals and he was beyond ecstatic, beyond that jump floor playing the cymbal. He was smiling, he was cheering at the end, he was playing those cymbals. And I think if we all be that passionate about our interests, it would be amazing. So, kudos to the band. They have a great season along with everybody else in their activities.
So, thank you. Mrs. Seaman, did you have anything?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kenyon?
I have nothing.
Alright, thank you. And Mr. Strews?
I do have a few things. First of all, I want to say thank you to eight members of Troop Twenty Four, the Boy Scout troop. If you have a chance, I don't think we have any pictures, do we?
You don't have to turn up, that's totally fine.
Don't judge the number of emails.
I will not judge anything there at all. Not after today. Troop Eight, or Twenty Four, which is Kate Terrell is the leader of that group. If you know Kate, graduated Pleasant Valley. Her troop came up and took care of the entire front of the high school. And if we get you a before picture and an after picture, as you know what happens in the month of June, July, and August, a lot of weeds will grow. And our landscaping in the front looked completely overgrown. There's the original picture of it. And when we get to the end here, you'll see a great picture of them and what they transformed that to be. So again, very, very appreciative of that troop and what they did there to make that look so great. So our goal is, will they do it every single year? We'll see if they will step up and do that for us, but the good news, I think, one of the boys is a ninth grader, so hopefully that'll continue. The other thing I do want to pass out to you, you don't have to read it tonight, but this, today in the mail, a letter came to you from a gentleman from Kentucky. He was actually in town for his sixty-second high school reunion. And so he graduated in nineteen sixty-three and he sent a letter about his experience of the class reunion tour of the high school and what it was like going through that and, extreme proud of Jason Jones as the tour guide, principal at the high school, but just read that when you have a moment. It's quite a heartwarming letter that he wrote. So very appreciative of everybody that attends those and also our commissioners who lead those tours through the high school. We tend to learn more about a lot of things than probably what they do. We, we enjoy it probably more just because of the stories that they tell us. I remember this when I went here, so it's fun. Another thing you want to share is with our Spartan Assembly. Our Spartan Assembly members have been stepping up at the start of the school year, first of all, with our kickoff with the whole staff. The idea was just to say, hey, bring us some games that staff can play. And they showed up and had a great opportunity for our staff to jump in with that mattress game. But then later that day, they came back and they helped our high school staff that were moving into the new classrooms, move their stuff from their old classrooms into their new classrooms. So again, without them, hands, a lot of hands make things better. So again, very appreciative of them. Lastly, I just want to remember that next Monday, a week from today, is Labor Day. The annual Labor Day is the Run with Carl, so if anyone's looking at walking, crawling, jogging, sprinting, whatever you want to do for three or five miles, we'd love to have you come out, or if you want to volunteer, please come out. All money raised goes to our graduating seniors for scholarship there. But again, great community event. We partner with Bettendorf on that event, but we'll start at Bettendorf Middle School and do the three to five mile runs from there. But if you are free next week, there's a link on our website that Heather has there, so we'd love to have you if you want to join. And I think that's all.
Alright, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, and, and as everybody was thinking, people, I wanted to thank, I know Leland and Shear, so I just wanted to thank Leland and all of his maintenance workers for all the work that they did to summarize that class is ready. From all over elementary, junior high, and high school, and high schools for the beginning of the year. I know you guys have a big time crunch because you only have a few amount of months to get everything done, but I know that you guys accomplished everything that you had asked, that we had asked you to do and that you thought you would be done. And I wanted to appreciate and send some thank yous to you and your staff for doing that.
Thank you.
Uh, I guess I would just like to add, it was fun to be a part of the welcome back on, for all the staff on Tuesday morning. Some of us gathered to welcome back. And it was really cool because when we walked in, the hallways were lined with parents and students and Spartan Assembly and cheer and, it was just, it was so cool. It was really cool for me to walk in and they weren't even there for me. And it was, I was just, I thought it was really neat that, you know, our staff that worked so hard was greeted like that. And it was a great, I heard great words from a lot of people about just the motivational talk you gave, Mr. Strews, and it's just exciting, you know, to start a new year and to start it with that kind of momentum. And everything was amplified and, you know, I was even listening, so. So thank you. That was great.
And the trivia was great.
You are a competitive bunch. I learned that about you.
Very good, very good. So, alright, I think I got everyone. So moving on to the consent agenda. Tonight that includes minutes, personnel, as well as open enrollment. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Conkle to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we will move on to approval of girls. And we'll start with the general fund.
I want the general fund warrants to be issued in a total amount of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-two cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Conkle, second by Director Canwisheer, that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition Fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Smith, that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Elementary Junior High Activity Fund.
I move the elementary junior high activity fund warrant be issued in a total amount of one thousand, sixty-six dollars and ten cents of payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Ayers, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? High School Activity Fund.
I move that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Canwisheer, that a high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Management Fund.
I want the management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wadley, second by Director Smith, that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Capital Projects.
I move the capital projects fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Canwisheer, second by Director Ayers, that capital projects fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions on this one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's go plant an equipment funding fund.
I move that the PEPFLE fund warrants be issued in the total amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and three cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wadley, second by Director Ayers, that PEPFLE fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Internal Service Fund.
I want the internal service fund warrants sixty-six, sixty-four to sixty-six, sixty-five, and each year through three oh six through thirty-three oh nine be issued in the total of four hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and eleven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Conkle, second by Director Smith, that internal service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Trust Fund.
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of five thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents in payment, in payment of invoices.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move on to, there's no old business this evening, so we will move on to new business and we will get a start of the year update.
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say a thank you. I mean, the work that Leanne Lee, Bernie, Jill, and Heather put in to prepare us for the last three weeks of the month of eighth August. Things really kick off in a hurry. When we have our school ministers Iowa Conference come back, we have our admin meeting. And we have four straight days of new teacher training, and then we have four days of all of our staff training. The amount of time that goes into planning, preparing for that, that starts back in about January. You're ready to make sure we're ready for the kickoff of the year and all the PD that takes place, so. These five ladies will kind of walk through some highlights from the week. Truly, when today comes, it's like, we can all breathe and say, the kids are now back, let's do our, our next job. It's, you're pretty exhausted after the last three weeks of what's gone on because it's such an intense season. We really take to heart and make sure it's a great experience for all of our new staff as well as our current staff. So just thank you to all of them for what they do. And I'll let them share kind of the highlights of what they took away from the last few weeks.
So I will start. We just really wanted to celebrate our TLS system that we have with our teacher leaders. The New Teacher Week. I tried to, I was there a lot of the first day. That was our last board meeting day. That was like the first That was like the first day of new teachers came back, but then the rest of the week unfolded and it was just amazing to see what, what our instructional coaches and our curriculum instruction and assessment facilitators and our mentors. Do with these new teachers to prepare them in a way that, I mean, I bet they went home every night thinking like their brains had just must have been so full. But they were so prepared, like I don't know that they could have been more prepared and so I just, it's a celebration to have a system like that. Most districts don't have. A, a system like us, especially just what they do for new teachers, the numbers we have of teacher leaders, it's phenomenal. So I just think that's a really big celebration that not to overlook that. The amount of time they put in preparing, I was just, I was blown away the whole week. That was a really big celebration. And then the next part that I'm going to talk about is we had Amanda Bickerstaff come and present a full day of generative AI from her AI and education. Um, company and she was with our seven twelve, uh, team for three hours in the morning and then elementary in the afternoon. Uh, she was absolutely phenomenal, the fastest three hours of professional development of my entire life. And everybody was saying that, they were like, oh, my gosh, that went so fast because they loved it so much. I only heard positive after, and I know there were some that were like, well, I teach this, do I need to go? Even those people were like, this was awesome. So it was just a very, it was a really in-depth introduction, I think, to tools that teachers can use in planning and delivering instruction. Um, just really helpful things that used to take, I know when I started teaching and, and was teaching. It used to take me hours and hours and hours to do, they could have done so quickly. But it was so much more about being literate in AI and figuring out the best way to utilize it. Obviously, it's changing all the time. Um, so figuring out how it works, where the information comes from, how to trust it, how to prompt it to give you the absolute best. Answer, product, analysis, whatever it is that it's looking for. Um, so there will be a survey sent to teachers after this to get some feedback about what they need next. So that'll be coming next week. And then just as a really quick reminder, last spring, Bernie let me know this today, last spring, there was a, um. Well, there's an AYI or an AI subcommittee that presented the guidelines. Um, that were developed and Amanda Bickerstaff had helped create those guidelines, so those are just always probably going to be a work in progress as AI changes and we continue to improve. Uh, the last thing that I'll just mention is the plan for twenty-five, twenty-six for AI in our buildings. Really, elementary is building AI literacy skills in students, mostly teachers using AI and teaching students how to use AI. It's not really kids using it yet. And then at the seven twelve building, it's, they're, they'll have building level opportunities, um, that'll be provided. Just using ready-made AI literacy lessons to be delivered to students and staff, so everyone's getting the same information. Um, like I said, things change quickly with AI, we know that that's going to happen. We always have to, obviously, we want to try to stay in the forefront, um, as much as possible, and I think our partnership that we've created with Amanda Bickerstaff has been really, really positive. People really enjoyed it and took a lot away from it, so that's all I got.
And I just say, I remember that Doug stands on that committee for us for the board of the AIPs, maybe, so thank you, Doug.
I'm going to touch on, um, another of our district initiatives. And I actually provided each one of you an updated version of our five-year plan. And I apologize for the pink instead of Spartan blue at the top, I think our ink cartridge might need to be repaired. Um, what I first wanted to draw your attention to are a, a few tweaks that, um, have changed since the last time you saw this document. So you'll notice in year two, um, the theme is really around safe, supportive and collaborative schools. But we've strengthened the outcomes from year one going into year two. Um, to make them, to make the impact of the work. The impact on students that this work is going to have really come through more in those outcome statements. So I think you'll see that reflected in year two, the updates we made then, and then the outcome statements for year three as well. So amplifier impact, um, also, of course, we turn everything into an acronym. We're calling it AYI. Um, it plays right into the second outcome of our five-year plan, um, really hitting on collaboration. Um, and I'm going to just share with you a little bit about what it's all about. Sorry, I need to get my talking points up, I have the presentation up and I'm trying to click and it's not advancing on my screen, it's very confusing. Um, so last spring, actually last November, we had a group of people travel down to Little Rock, Arkansas for a conference down there. Um, where they saw one of the authors of this book and one of the drivers of amplifier impact, um, in person and they came back super excited. Fast forward through the spring, um, we had a group of people together, well, we knew that we wanted to adopt this as a district initiative after that first initial training down in Little Rock. Um, so we formed a district subcommittee, um, the district directors, we have, um, representation of instructional coaches from each level and then a variety of teacher leaders serving on the committee also. Um, we planned a lot last spring to create a timeline and prepare to roll amplifier impact out to the whole district. Um, it started in June, um, as we started to build capacity in our administrators and all of the district instructional coaches. We front-loaded some of the professional development so that, um, on August fourteenth and fifteenth, they could really be leaders in the work and help facilitate conversations at their tables. So what we did, we actually brought the author, Michael Mafoni, to our district. And he presented, um, a two-day workshop for us centered on the work of amplifier impact. Um, again, what this does, it really brings together the principles of professional learning communities, collaboration and instructional coaches. Sorry, instructional coaching into one framework. And it really moves beyond that traditional one-to-one coaching with the teacher and moves it, um, into that collaborative scene of coaching teams. I want to be clear that we're not replacing individual coaching with coaching collaborative teams, we're now going to be doing both and actually they complement each other really well. Um, so the idea is that it really provides more personalized support for teachers and builds more collective efficacy among teams. And with educational research, collective efficacy has the biggest effect size on student achievement. And really, the end goal is to maximize student learning, that's what this is all about. So part of his work is all about a strategy implementation guide. And, um, what it does, it is a roadmap for ensuring consistency in collaboration. And it really defines what that professional learning community process looks like across the whole district. So that there's consistency, predictability, um, with each teacher team. So. I'm just checking my notes here. So the way we rolled this out is we had one hundred and twenty-five administrators and teacher leaders down at the aisle on August fourteenth and fifteenth with Michael Mafoni. We took up the whole ballroom, which was amazing. Um, we had teacher leaders sit in their building, um, their building groupings for the first day and a half. And then the second day and a half, he actually, or sorry, the second half day. We went through a process where we actually made the first SIG for our district, which is that strategy implementation guide. And what you see up there, that, um, the SIG is based in five anchor statements that really are the anchors for what good collaboration looks like. And we went through a process where we built a continuum for each one of those anchor statements. And, um, the idea is that this SIG is made with our own voices. It's important and relevant to our own context and it's going to be a living and breathing document. So what you see up there is actually the fruit of about three and a half hours that went into that creation of the SIG. We started in large teams condensed down and then a few brave souls actually took the spirit of the conversations for each one of their anchor statement groups. And condensed it and synthesized it into our, the first draft of PD SIG. So since then, our subcommittee has gotten together and we refined it, we didn't change any of the content, we just made sure that some wording was consistent throughout the document. But, um, we're excited to start rolling this out to all staff in September. Most staff is going to engage in learning about amplifier impact and what it means to coach collaborative teams. That's going to happen this fall with adoption of the principles and use of the SIG beginning in January. However, we are asking for early adopters in September, so we'll have, um. Quite a few teams from each level, um, that we are asking to volunteers, early adopters, that will be able to start using the tools from amplifier impact to deepen their collaborative process. So, and I, I can't, um, not share this, I told Brian, I text him on Friday, I'm like, remind me to tell you what Mr. Mafoni said, it'll make your heart happy. So we were wa, I was walking around with him when we were going through the process of creating our SIG. And he had told us a couple of times how impressed he was by our district, but I thought he was just making us feel good because we paid a lot of money to have him come, right? But we were walking around the room and he goes, Bernie, I'm serious, he goes, of all the districts I've worked with, you are top-notch. And he said, I'm, I'm completely serious when I say that, and he goes, you know what really makes a difference? He goes, your leaders, your principals are at the table, they're engaging in the work, nobody was on their device the whole time. You didn't see a single computer screen open throughout that whole ballroom. And so he was super impressed by level of engagement of our administrators, but really all of the leaders in that room doing the work that we did. We really accomplished a lot in a few days' time.
Definitely. I mean, he also told me that I should have gone into hospitality. On the fourteenth, um, they, everyone that gambled a lot got a free Hawaiian meal, meal out at the casino and they were all walking towards the ballroom. I think I redirected seventy.
At least.
To the right place, he's like, man, girl, I don't know how you do in education, but did you ever think about hospitality? And like, I know, right? It's like my calling, so. But he was, he was legit sincere about both comments, right? And my career at the casino.
And one of the, um, foundations of this work is that this impacts all students. So not just regular Gen Ed track students, this is really for all students. And so having Jill there with her special education teacher leaders was awesome and it's really reinforcing the belief that all students are Gen Ed students first. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I know you're super excited.
Looking at Chelsea, who's one of those, I don't want to bring you out in the audience, but we're, she's a part of engaging in a study that goes along with this book that actually, when I attended. The conference in Naperville to kind of catch up from Little Rock, I know Bernie caught up and then I caught up. Um, this group of teachers from Tennessee said, you got to order, yes, we can, because it's really about, um. What Bernie said, all students are general educations first, so it's general education students first, so it's not separate, but we're the same and how can we tighten that? So we're, we're engaging in that book study right now. Did you want to add anything else, Chelsea? Love that you're here. Okay, so how many of you have seen The Office Space? This is where we at, did you have another?
Nope, I'm done.
The Office Space, right, there's the two bobs, what would you say you do here? So we kicked off on, if you've seen that movie, you know this clip, right, where the, they're interviewing all the employees to ask them about their roles. At their, um, at their company or corporate company, so we kicked off, when I say we, I, um, Mrs. Zen and myself. Led, um, our para educator training last Thursday and I kicked it off with basically, um, the state of Iowa has a lot of guidance. About, um, clear delineation of roles and responsibilities of para educators. The roles and responsibilities of administrators and then the roles and responsibilities of, um, teachers. So we just kind of went through that. No, you're good. Um, so we played like a little thumbs up, thumb ga, thumbs down game, talked through some of the roles, um, so everyone would have a better understanding. And we really honed in on talking through the importance of building students' independence. So that next slide that you'll see, um. We spent some time on this because, because we really talk about, our ultimate goal is to build independent students, right? When we think of our para educators who are super valued employees of our district, right? They're the, they're the touch point, point people with our kids. Um, their goal is to not work themselves out of a job, but to build an independent student and we have lots of students that need them, right? So we really talk about, and this is some training we offered last year and I would see us keep doing this type of thing. We really talk about that, um, prompting, how you can move from doing a lot for the student to backing off. So this was one of the charts, I was really surprised, a lot of the para educators in the audience are like, can we have that? I mean, and I, I was looking at it like, oh, there's a lot of words on there and stuff, but they're like, will you send us that? And they're really looking for more training about that because they really believe we need to build students' independence. So we had a really nice conversation about their role and how important it is and I could see us doing more training on this, this type of thing where we move from most. Um, prompting to least prompting to make independent students. So that was just one of the slides, right? Fading support is not taking away, it's building capacity. Um, encouraging them to always ask, what can the student first try? Um, we talk a lot about like the supports in the natural environment for a student, so we talked a lot about how. Just building those independent skills and using natural supports within the environment instead of always being reliant on an adult. So that was just one of our slides I wanted to share. We then spent some time after we kind of talked about the roles and responsibilities and the importance of their position. We actually went through and I thought this part would be super, super boring, but I think they were very appreciative of understanding. A student's legal individualized educational program plan and understanding those components. They will all be getting, or they should have gotten, um, our IEPs at a glance of all the students they're working at. So they're aware of what are the students' goal areas? What are the students' accommodations and what do I need to be aware of because I'm working with this student as well, right? So we went through this and I won't click, we won't click on the link and go through it, but they were, they were very interested in learning more. Um, I was really honest about how last year, the state of Iowa, um, had like five different series of, they brought directors of special education together. And really trying to collect resources and how we just do a better job of not only supporting our para educators, but how we make those decisions about what students are going to have para educator support. Parents are a super important voice of the team, but they're one voice, so just because a parent might say. My child needs an additional adult, we really, really want to be intentional about this, so I did share. Um, that we adopted kind of what the state of Iowa was recommending and we still need work on this, but it's kind of a, a big document that through IEP meetings, our teachers are working through with their building administrators. To really determine, um, when a child during a school day needs parent support. And then how do we back that off and how do we make all decisions based on data, not just what feels good or what you want, right? I'm a parent, you guys know that, I'm a hovering parent, so I would love to say, yes, I want an adult with my kid all day because that makes me feel safe. But that's not the intent, right? So we really talked about, um, trying to be intentional about deciding when a child needs an adult with them. So it was good, they got their eyes on that. Again, we went into just how do you build relationships with students? A lot of you know this, I don't always know this, I have to remember it, but you know, behavior is a child's way of telling us they, they need to tell us something that they don't have words about. So we had a lot of slides about just how you build relationships and how you, how you might de-escalate situations, how you might work with, um, students and adults. Um, so you can go to the next one, lots of, um, I did pull a little bit, not all of our para educators will be fully trained in CPI. I think I've talked to you guys about that before, but it gives the adults in our buildings, um, the ability to have to use a restraint or a seclusion, which we've, do not use those as. We don't use those very frequently here and if we have to, it's definitely a last resort, it's for student safety, other student safety, adult safety. But the CPI, um, provides this whole module about like, they call it the de-escalation, so all the steps you get to before. Students in trauma, so what I really did for a bunch of slides was just talk them through these four levels you'll see on the left of behaviors that all people go through. Um, you can really apply it to a medical situation, you can apply it to, I mean, I think different people are trained at, in hospitals on CPI. Police officers are some change, trained on CPI, it's what a lot of schools use. And just talks about basically how our reactions as people can kind of determine how, how the person, the other person's going to react. So I spent a lot of time going through like, if you're in the level of anxiety, what are some approaches you can take to respond? What's supportive, right? And you kind of build your whole way to, as someone's ramping up, what can you do to ramp it back down? And then what do you do when a person's kind of out of their, um, situation and it's kind of having that tension reduction? So we didn't get deep into it, but you could really get deep into it and we just sort of talked about how their response matters. I love this and I may have told some of you this before, I love Dr. Dan Siegel, he's not the most exciting speaker, but he's a. I love this, and I may have told some of you this before, I love Dr. Dan Siegel. He's not the most exciting speaker, but he's a, he's a brain researcher out of UCLA. Some of you may have heard flipping my lid. Have you heard about when you flip your lid and you're in the back of your brain? So, I just, I shared a lot of this research. I love doing this with my own kids at home. My husband does not always love it. Um, but you know, when we have tantrums or whatever, we talk about people, you know, have. In the back of their brain and how do you bring it back down? So, we talked a lot about that, so I wanted to share that little tidbit. And then finally, we ended up before Leanne gets to take over. I just wanted to let them know, we're going to continue to support them with training. There is something the state of Iowa, and I think a couple of school districts had started to use it, but this book, I need to order this book because. There is some good like book studies they could do about how they fade off their support to build independent students. Um, Council for Exceptional Children also has some modules, our new um special education facilitator. Inform me of some free modules she was aware of. And then this Parabytes is another um. I think it's an online webinar, free training. So, there's just lots out there that we can be tapping into. And it's just a matter of um finding the right time and really making sure we're supporting these. These ladies and gentlemen who have our students every day, so. Then we moved on to Leanne's portion, I think, after that.
Yeah, so um from HR perspective, New Teacher Week, I was ecstatic that I actually got to participate this year. Because I wasn't only a month into the job. Um, and so, you know, we had thirty-four new teachers start this year. And the slide just kind of gives you the breakdown of where, where they uh are in our buildings. Um, one of the things that definitely understood um is, I'm going to need more time next year. Um, we used the uh MOEE, which is the Model of Educational Ethics, which is a national organization. Um, they have amazing resources, they have a lot of scenarios, and when you're dealing with new teachers and seasoned teachers. You know, boundaries, how do we not cross them? Social media being such a big part of people's lives, texting, all of these things to keep people. With that understanding of where do you lie personally and where do you lie professionally? So, definitely we'll expand for next year. Um, had a lot of good feedback about it, so um definitely something we want to touch on again. We'll go back just a second. And so, I do want to say that Doug was also at our New Teacher Breakfast, but I couldn't find a picture of you anywhere in. That were there. So, I did want to say thank you to our board members who made it for our New Teacher Breakfast. I think it's very important for them to be able to meet you guys and see you. And see how much you're committed to them as much as we are, so it, it was definitely great to have four of you there um for that breakfast. So, uh, my portion of our new uh para educator onboarding from a high level. Um, you know, introduced all of the new paras, you know, they all are sitting in this theater, but they don't know who's in their building, who's not. So, putting their names up on a slide, having them stand up so that, I, that's my buddy, that's who I'm going to Riverdale Heights with, that's who I'm going to Cody with. Um, so, we did an introduction, uh, went over mandatory trainings because that seems to be something we chase around a lot. But I think as we move forward, we're going to get a little bit better handle on that. High-level policy overview, attendance expectations, time management. Um, where I spent the majority of my time, however, was on our benefits overview. I like to call it my mom's speech about financial independence for retirement. Really honing in on, yes, IPRs is amazing today, but you don't know what ten, fifteen, twenty years brings you. So, investing in yourself early in that 403B is what's going to get you that financial independence. Um, and so I actually did have several of them come back to me afterwards to want to talk about it because they hadn't heard about a 403B. So, I, I think that's a message we should be getting out to everybody more, is that this is offered. And I always say, if you can buy a Starbucks a week, then you can invest ten to fifteen dollars into your 403B, right? Um, the other thing that was just received amazingly was our new EAP. Um, you know, we went from an EAP where we offered mental health sessions for individuals. And it, it was limiting. Um, and so, Brian having an open mind and listening to my crazy ideas at times. Um, saw the value in this new EAP. And when I presented it to the paras, they were just awestruck. About all of the services that this EAP provides for all of our employees, full-time and part-time employees. Uh, there's legal consultation, there's financial consultation, there's uh identity theft restoration. Um, there is mental health, uh, there's uh online chat groups if you're having a certain problem, that's anonymous. So, there's just so many services that this EAP offers our employees and it's free to them. That is a, a cost that the district uh is paying and it is free to all of our employees. I sent out an email um July first when it went into effect. And I'm going to guess very few people read that email, so I'm going to wait a week until school is in session and resend that. So that our teachers now are going to have that in front of them to understand all of the services that we are providing for them in this new EAP. Um, the best part I think about the Paris Day though is after they're done with Jill and I in the morning. After lunch, they get to go to their buildings and they spend an hour or two, some four, depending on what their principals had. Well, finding out where their classroom is, possibly meeting their teacher, um, knowing where to put their stuff for their breaks, where they're going to park. Um, that wasn't something before last year we had really done, and so it, it actually, the feedback that Jill and I got at um. The in-service with our returning paras was, they absolutely loved it last year. They loved that little bit of time to be able to go into the building before they got put into a classroom with kiddos. Um, and so, as part of our overall retention plan, we are implementing a weekly onboarding. So, if we have new paras that need to start, every Thursday, we will have an uh, an onboarding. So that they receive the same benefits that our ones starting at the beginning of the year do. Um, so they'll come to us on the day, we'll get all their mandatory trainings done, Jill has some time, I do, Tech does. And then the next day, as part of this new onboarding, they're going to spend the first half of their day with a senior para. So that they can do job shadowings, because a lot of our paras have never even been in a classroom or been a para. And so, we put them in there and, how do they know what good looks like? How do they know what they be, should be doing or shouldn't? And so, we're going to give them that, that first half of their first day, really just being able to job shadow somebody, spend some time with them, ask questions. Um, some of our principals even said they could, they could, we give them that full day, so that they had that full time. But that's going to be building dependent on what, what they have. But we're at least going to give them that first half a day to spend with somebody and, and see, see what, what they're going to be doing and what it looks like. And so, last, uh, our classified staff, we have thirty-six new classified staff starting for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, we had twenty new para educators, six food service, five new coaches, uh, two new computer techs, um, which is. Uh, we're bringing in because we had three promotions within that department, and so this opened up these positions for us. Uh, we have two new custodians and one new admin assistant at the high school. Um, so, we actually had a really big start of the year um staff for this year between classified and certified staff.
What percent of that, or what's the mix on filling positions that were open from, you know, someone leaving versus new positions?
Classified?
Yeah.
Courage, because I could not answer that question.
We had some that um, I, we have three I know that were due to replacement. Because we transferred positions in district life positions versus building positions. Um, I think only two of these are new positions. One was at Pleasant View and the other, I believe, was at Forest Grove. The others are going to be replacing people who didn't come back this year.
Yeah, we have one custodian position that's not filled yet, that'll be a new one. This was a trans, two transfers and then bringing someone else into fill their positions.
Thank you.
Do we have any educator gaps as of today? And how, I remember last year a discussion about the application rate for our educator positions having declined. Does it continue to decline?
Well, since we haven't really posted in several months, it's, it stayed the same. So, we won't know unless we have a position come open mid-year that we're going to have to post for. And then that's still probably going to be a decreased rate because people can't get out of contracts. So, it's going to be somebody who has just graduated in December and can come and start teaching in January. Or it's somebody who may be relocating. So, mid-year applicants is going to be an interesting one to track, but we'll, we'll have to see. And, and we'll only know it once we have a position come open, but right.
More for the thirty-four we hired.
The what?
Thirty-four. Application volume for the thirty-four we hired.
So, secondary has a smaller number than elementary. Um, we had some of our positions at the secondary that only had three applicants. Um, and at the height of that, maybe fifteen. So, our secondary definitely had a, a reduced number. On the elementary side, even with the reduced number, we were still sitting at between thirty and forty-five applicants per, per job posting. So, we still had a really good pool of, of applicants that I would get down to ten to fifteen for the principals to screen to get. To five to ten to interview. So, we still had a decent number coming in from the elementary level.
I guess it might not be surprising. What I'm really interested in is, where's the decline coming and then what kind of roles? Because, you know, next year, it's likely, frankly, if you look at trends, to be worse. So, if you're getting three for one position today.
Special education, special education is our number one decline. Um, some of our positions, we had no applicants, and so we had to get creative with splits. Um, junior high, high school, again, that secondary level seems to be our hardest. Um, when you look at number of people going into special education and graduating, it has decreased. In Iowa, thirty percent in the last three years, right? So, you already had a small number going into those specialized fields. Um, Jill and I had to get creative with being able to have the right strat levels in the right buildings. And so, we did approach a couple of teachers to see if they would be able to get that endorsement that we needed. And we had, everybody said yes, they, they moved forward with it, right? So, if we can't find it, can we grow it in-house? Um, we did that with the uh TPRA program. Um, we had somebody that came in and went into special education. So, we're just going to have to get, I think, a little more creative with how we're going to develop those positions or people in those positions. Because the enrollment rate for those are just not, it's not it.
So, if I can restate what you just said, first of all, I'm super pleased with the staff that are being flexible, helping us out with the problem. But what I'm hearing is, we have hit the spot where we're not getting applicants for open roles now.
Yes.
Okay, because I don't think that was a problem last year, not that I recall. Or did we do something similar last year?
Did you say for open enrolled students?
I can say from last year, before I got here, we did hire people that didn't have the endorsements we needed. But as a condition of their employment, they agreed to get it. So, it was still similar. We just didn't go in-house to get it. We were asking people who were coming into the district to agree to get the additional endorsement. Um, I would say the other area that our applicant pool was low is in that secondary level ELA. Right? Um, that, that our applicant pool was low there. So, going to have to look into that. But otherwise, foreign language, depending on what we were looking for. Yeah. But it's really sitting in that secondary level that we're seeing the, the applicant.
Based on the um changes that we made, the decisions that were made with looking, and I'm going to probably ask this. Not in the most articulate way, so I pre-apologize for that. Um, you know, we reduced some positions because enrollment was down. And we're talking about positions then, that did get posted going with, you know, lower or no applicants. How are we feeling today at where we sit with enrollment about the decisions that were made?
Great question. Later in our agenda, we'll answer all those for you. We'll go through enrollment. You, one thing I would say, a couple of things, I would, if I were to look at globally where we're at today. First of all, the teacher uh apprenticeship that we have put on, where we've had some uh para professionals gone back to get their degree in special ed. That has been a huge help for us. We've hired. Two for sure, that we've hired that are now with us, which we may not have found those positions previously.
Throughout the, at least two this last year and two the previous year.
I think when you talk about ELA, we had some really late resignations because spouse moves. Um, in ELA, and luckily, we found people in those positions as well, which was, I was surprised we did. We filled everything we needed. Um, I think when you look at our staff this year, I'm not going to have the exact number, I can't find it right now, but of our thirty-four staff. Like, six or seven were brand-new teachers. The rest are all our veteran teachers of so many years. So, I think we're starting to see that shift also. Where before you might hire a lot of young teachers, we're starting to see that shift. So, pros and cons to that, but um.
And of the thirty-four, we had five or six positions that were new positions this year, so we didn't have them previously. So, we weren't replacing, we're, we were actually adding staff. Um, so, all of those things.
My last comment is, thank you for the EAP thing with Paris. This is an example of what we ask you to do when you come in and help us with the para turnover problem, so. Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I'm really excited for the work they're doing, her and Jill with this. When someone comes on board, to give them a half a day to mentor somebody and follow somebody, that's, I think, could be a really huge change as well. Heather, did you want to share anything? Do you have anything to share?
I think they covered it.
And I'm just going to say this, Heather is, when you ask Heather to do something for you, it gets done. Um, I will say that when it, when it comes to our kickoff or anything that has to be done, social media wise and. Hey Heather, can we do this? I got it. I mean, that's her response, I'll figure it out. The Kahoot thing that we did with the opening piece, she figured it out. She got it all to work smooth and seamlessly, so. I just appreciate her and what she does there and, and the work that she does with our district there, but.
We have some questions though, because I saw that the two top teams were from Cody, so we're giving them a little bit of an. No, they're just that smart about the district. They were so, they were so excited that. I think the two, top two teams were Cody Elementary Staff. They got some free PV garb, I think.
It would have been the school board, but I was a little slow, punching them in a few times.
I know. Were you guys quite competitive? Like Bernie wasn't moving fast enough.
It was my fault.
Number three. Number three.
Coming back to these four, what they've shared today, there's a lot of exciting things happening in our district that'll benefit our staff. Which then ultimately has an impact on our kids every single day. So, very excited for this upcoming year and just appreciative of the work that they've done. They've only given you a glimpse today of what has transpired the last three weeks. Very impressive and thanks to them.
Does anyone have any questions for Ann or Jill or Heather?
Um, I need to say, one of the things that hasn't been touched on, which I didn't hear anything about it, so I'm assuming it was great, but every year we get an update on the busing. And so, today, I, I mean, let, you said everything was going well, they have enough bus drivers la- at the last meeting. I don't know, how did the routes go today? Any issues there?
Um, right now, I, there's been a lot, I can give you my, at the junior high, I mean, here's what I saw. Junior high this morning, we had a bus that pulled in the wrong spot, so let the kids off in the wrong spot, but it was great, so we got that, we'll get those kinks worked out. Um, you know, I think it's always, it's a lot of moving parts. You're hoping that no one misses a bus stop or we, you know, those type of things. Uh, but I haven't had any calls on that. Before, around five o'clock, I got a call from Stacy, she said all the buses were in, everyone was accounted for. They were just kicking off late-run buses at that time, but they had two people in the office. So, if a call did come in from a late run, they had two people there to answer phone calls. Because if you know late runs, that just can be crazy. Because you have so many kids and you're trying to figure out where are they stopping in clusters, they don't stop at the house. So, it's make sure kids get off at the right stop, not the wrong one, they're walking. So, there's a lot of just moving parts there as well. But overall, I would say a good day. Uh, we'll see what tomorrow morning brings, but we'll keep hitting all the schools to make sure buses are getting dropped off. The thing is, a lot of bus drivers returned, therefore, a lot of them are running the same routes. I think our biggest struggle right now, to be personally honest, is um the number of families that we have right now. That are asking for two stops. So, a child might, it might be a, a family that's divorced or. They want to pick up at one house at one day and another house on another day, and our buses are so full. It's getting very difficult to honor those. We've been very kind about, yes, we can pick them up at those stops. But that's a struggle we're just having that we got to figure out what we do there and having what we call the courtesy stop. Can we continue on with the courtesy stop in those situations? We want to if we can, but it's getting harder. I did hear that today.
I have a second question, I have two more questions. Second question, when we were doing the tour of the high school. There were several things that you mentioned, okay, it's supposed to be done before the school starts. And we know certain things that were not supposed to be done, things that were supposed to be done. So, can you give us an update on what did get completed so far?
Yeah. I think uh, when I left on Friday. Um, I sent a thank you note to our, to project managers over there. Um, thank you because, I'm not sure how we got to where we were by Friday, to where we were two weeks ago or three weeks ago. Um, they had a hundred and thirty one day, a hundred and fifty contractors there another day, just trying to get things taken care of. Um, there are things that have to be done, there's no doubt. I mean, we, but we're in the space today, it was. Kids seem to really like it, the staff are liking it. It's just all the little things now, it's the. It's too cold in our room, so it's the balancing of the HVAC system, it's all those things, with the card readers, it's. You name it, there's little things that we have to get in place, but we're using the space. Even the serving area that we, I will, I would say in two weeks, the serving area will be up and running. Um, when you guys went through, you're probably like, there's no way, but it has come together, it's looking good. Um, we may even say if, if lunch is going well, we'll hold off and say, let's keep them out there for three weeks, give them more time in the serving area, so it's ready to go. But um.
There's nothing like it does something done.
I, yes.
But right now, they're using both of those, those two areas for, for the cafeteria right now that?
No, the kitchen is being used right now. So all the food prep's taken care of. Then they'll bring the food out through the hallway into where the stair, open stairwell by the lockers. They're serving the food there. So the kids, when they get their food, will go straight into the area where they're eating. Today was actually a really good thing. You've talked to high school administrators. They would say because we only had ninth graders really for the most part there for lunch, some sophomores. So they did two lunch periods. They could really work a lot of the kinks out and kinda see the flow of how kids would naturally gravitate. So that worked out too.
So those two, those two areas that were classrooms are not being used now?
The two area classrooms.
Remember, there's two areas that had not been developed out yet because we were gonna, we put the tables in.
Yes, that's all tables.
There's still table, okay.
All tables.
And that'll be there until about November.
Probably by November, yes.
If you were to go in those two areas, there's actually thirty lunchroom tables in each area.
It looks like a cafeteria now.
Okay, great.
And that's those nine classrooms where we didn't put the walls in.
Okay, and then the last question was, just curious to know, you know, we passed the cell phone L C at the last meeting. How did that, how did that go over with this, with the teachers during the education of them last weekend? How did it go today so far? Any issues?
I can speak to the junior high. I was out there around lunchtime. And I was in the hallway and I had some teachers approach me with really good questions. There were some students who had gone to their locker and who had their cell phones in their hands on the way. And so they were wondering, like, is it okay for them to have them out like that on the way to the lunchroom or do they need to keep them away? You know, so they're really thinking about and monitoring it, which is good. So I think, you know, at any level, the first couple of days tend to be that honeymoon period. So I think maybe at the next board meeting, I'll have a little bit better update on how things are going within the first two weeks. But I was, I was happy that the staff were asking those questions.
A lunch, I know Mr. Wickin mentioned when I was out there for a lunch, it wasn't there for B and C. He reminded kids when they left that all cell phones had to be put back in their lockers as they were leaving the cafeteria. So he mentioned that over the intercom system.
I was in there too when they were, some students asked to use the restroom during lunch and they had to put their cell phones on a back table before they left. So, yeah.
And then the high school, the new addition, thirteen teachers in there, they were saying, we need our parking locks hung up before the first day of school. So at least they knew the message. They knew it had happened. The expectation was there. Whether it was followed through or not, we'll have to ask. I don't.
Do you have to say that? In the first day of school was when at Cody, the construction needed to be down to one lane. And so I was kinda chuckling to myself because, you know, I appreciate the construction workers and the effort being made on the road. It's beautiful, but we had all summer. I had to do this one bitty section on the first day of school. And plus those teachers, cause we were out there till three ten, three fifteen. Just sitting there because we couldn't leave the parking lot because it was one lane. So not our school's issue, but I do hope that they will take into consideration maybe not doing during drop-off and pickup. Because, you know, I think that's a lot to ask of the teachers to stay after and do that. They do with grace. They don't care, but they should be back in the classroom prepping for the next day, not standing out helping with traffic and, you know. So, but I don't know if that caused any bus delays for the Cody.
The only announcement I had today was one bus, bus eight was running late at one point. I don't know which one that was, but that's the only message I got all day. That's this morning, I think, so. Yeah, I mean, our, the junior high buses pulled out today at two thirty-five. We really like, what, two thirty-three? So we're running a little bit, but that'll get quicker as kids know, here's where my bus is. So that just dictates how the whole afternoon's gonna run. Is what time they pull out of junior high. So we'll time it out.
Uh, great news on both the buses and the para educators because that has been a hot topic for us for the last couple of years. So it's really nice to hear the big strides we've made there. Having that support and training for paras is just phenomenal. Also, the Canva A I, or the A I tool training, I have heard from a lot of teachers how cool that was and how much it how interesting it was, how much they learned and how much time it'll save them. They're like, we can put Canva together like so fast compared to what we've been able to do in the past and, you know, stuff for our, our rooms that we can get up and so I heard great, great feedback on that. So thank you all for all the support you're giving each other and our, our group, our staff and teachers. Moving on to summer project updates.
So if Leland come forward, Leland has a handout for you as well to kinda go over some of the projects. This year might be, in all my years that I've known, the most. Just the busiest year we've had with projects across the board and Leland will go through those and what we're trying to manage this year. We always have our five-year capital project plan that we have in place. So there's a lot of things on that and he'll go through some of the classroom modernizations that, you know, we always talk about, what does that look like? What is those involved? He has that for you tonight. But again, just thanks to him and his team and what they managed and where we landed, where everything went going on. So he'll be able to share these with you at this time. So Leland, I'll turn it over to you.
I'd love to tell you that. I've got a bunch of pictures from all the projects, but you really don't need to see them all anyway. And to be honest, from the, like, the first day we get out of school, that's when I think it just takes off. And we're actually putting the final coats of paint on the day before school starts. So there's always a couple of projects that's just run over just a little bit. Playground, I know is one of your hot buttons. They're close. But hopefully they're still pouring some concrete this last, these last few days. Yeah, with the extreme heat, it really makes it difficult for them to pour concrete and for the concrete to settle. Just, just how it should properly. For the most part, I think most of our projects, we've got most of them completed. A couple of them were GOGA pit mats though. I know those have to be done. The, but with all the rain and the grass mowing, the grounds crew just didn't have any time to, to complete the GOGA mats. But that can be done yet this fall. So that's a non-issue. But the, probably the biggest thing we did though, we did a lot of classrooms where we put in brand-new ceilings, painted the rooms and new carpet. And that's district-wide. Most of those lists came back from, from the staff, from the administrators.
So here's the list of items that he did. And just to give you kind of update, Leland, we meet with all the building principals in about November. And we start going through walkthroughs with them to look at where they're at in their buildings. That's really where these lists come from. So that Leland can start working with arranging contractors between November and the start of the summer. So go ahead, Leland.
Yeah, probably the hardest part though is that you also have, being that Forest Grove and the junior high kinda finished like the junior, like the high school did this year. They got done with the majority of it right before school started. But it doesn't give you any time to go through those final punch list. So you have to now go through and get contractors back on during, during breaks or on weekends to come back and work on items that just didn't get fixed. Or just weren't installed properly. We're gonna fight, we're gonna fight the same thing with. Uh, there's areas that just weren't done. Uh, there's areas that just weren't, not completed our standards. So now they have to come back. So how do we get them to come back, the students in those areas? It's the same thing. If there's painting and stuff that needs to be done, you can't do that during the day because somebody's gonna brush up against or put their hands in it. So it'll be a challenge, but Brian said he's up for it, so.
Well, and we have, we have weekly construction meetings. That's one that we talk about. Is if you have to touch up painting, what does that look like? What can they put up for zones so kids don't walk into something? And so we'll work through all those and what that looks like with the contractors.
So I did bring this two little samples. Now these, the playground, this is the base for the playground rubber. And it's usually, it's about five inches thick. It's not quite this thick. But this is more soft, it's more pliable. So that's, that's the base coat.
Should we roll it around?
This is the top. And this is about an inch, an inch and a quarter, an inch and a half thick is the top. This is a little bit thicker, but that's more solid.
I already touched it. I broke off a spot too right here.
This is the fun part.
You have a chance to walk on it.
Well, this is a lot harder.
This is basically put in place where they will go through and they basically use a troll and just, my hand spread it out.
But I thought you might be interested to see what's, what is part of that. We are gonna have some issues. I'm not sure how to handle it. Hopefully we've got a bunch of students to ride their scooters. And golf carts, electric golf carts on the new playgrounds. The question is, how do we keep them off?
Now, cause there's no ledge.
Yes, there's no ledge because it made a handicap accessible, but it also makes it nice for them just to come in with their electric scooters.
Does that ruin the surface?
Could.
There is these signs and stuff, I guess.
So now I put signs and stuff up. Yeah, I hope they abide by that.
The scooters are everywhere. The other day I was leaving work and there was three kids out in the football field. I mean, they weren't doing anything maliciously, but they're riding their scooters across the football field and it's just, we gotta figure out what we do with scooters and, cause they get around everywhere. Or the electric motor, like, like more stuff as well.
We're actually quite surprised when I heard about it. The contractors were telling us about it. They just didn't have two or three showed up, that showed up. At least like thirty kids showed up at once.
Scooter gang.
Yeah. They were up at once.
Oh, that's a bunch of little junkies on scooters together.
Is there anything you wanna point out on this list for any of these schools in particular?
Just, we've got, we, it was major things went on at the high school this year. That's, if we went to the last page or second to last page. High school. Just there's a lot that's happened at the high school. I think it was seventeen classrooms. We got new carpet, ceilings and paint, which is a lot. High school, we also had an isolation room. Which, Jill, that's the de-escalation rooms. Yeah. The old, the press box on the, the home side. Kind of just got gutted. It's been patched over the years. There was actually three layers of siding that was on that press box. So, and I didn't realize it because they said we took a layer off. Well, they took the signage off. And they took a layer off and they could see where the signage was before that. And they took a layer off and see where the signage was before that. So we removed all those layers, went back to just the core basic and rebuilt the whole thing. So hopefully we're good there for ten, fifteen, twenty years. But we put a new roof and everything else on it too at the same time.
No, weird. We don't know yet. Part of it is, though, they're pretty big block letters. So we don't know if we wanna put them on there. We're gonna see how everyone, kind of the height of where people sit in front of the press box. We thought about maybe putting a Spartan head on there or some, like a logo of some sort. We're gonna give it a little bit of time to kinda see how it all plays out and what the best idea might be. So we're gonna hold tight on that right now. More to come.
So, the high school's gonna have some, there's gonna be some trials, some issues with the high school just because we don't have cameras installed yet, contact access installed yet. So there's gonna be some complaints. Some of the cables not even pulled yet. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have more issues than, and I guess the words turbulence at the high school than we did at junior high Forest Grove. I would, I was hoping to get that project, majority of it completed by June, not last week. Because it takes a while to get all the bugs and kinks out of it. That'll be a challenge.
So without cameras.
We have cameras on the, the core building. It's just the expansions.
And that's where I was gonna go. So have we ever had problems with theft or any of that sort of thing when, in the night hours basically? Cause if there's no cameras, right, then it's probably not hard for someone to access if they were trouble. And now that the students are back in, there's a lot of foot traffic going through the areas.
Except to get back in those areas where the cameras don't exist, you have to go through camera areas. And I did see we got, cause we didn't even have parking lot lights until this weekend. In fact, I'm not even, what day did those go out? Do you know?
Uh, Friday night or Saturday morning?
It must've been Saturday morning, cause Friday night, we still didn't have parking lot lights. So that's good news. At least we have parking lot lights out there.
When you go through in November and you're coming up with the list of things to do for summer, is there a checklist you use? Or how do you gather that information from teachers and everybody so that your list in the summer can accurately reflect the work that needs to be done?
It actually, it doesn't come from.
Overly simplifying something that actually doesn't work at all.
It's filtered out by the, by the principals. So it's not, we don't go to every person and say, hey, what would you like done? Cause the list is so huge. Just with the principals putting their input in, then it's like, okay, there's only so many dollars and so much time because you only have like this, you already have ten weeks. You get all this work done. So it's like, now you have to prioritize it. So it's like, okay, what's your number one? What's your number two? What's your number three?
Yeah, even wants versus needs.
Correct. Exactly what it is too, the wants and needs. We have those discussions too. Understand what you want it, but you actually need it.
And I think one of the things that I really tried to help Leland with this year in the meetings that I've had and was, you know, we have to look big picture district. He has a district budget and your priority may not be a district priority. So really having those principals have those hard conversations to say, what are our true priorities for our building? Because then he has to roll that up to district priorities to make decisions on where are those dollars gonna be spent based off of safety, students, different things that, that he did. So it was a lot of work and a lot of spreadsheets, but and I, job on it.
I feel like some of this is kinda built into our five-year plan where like we've made, you know, it's kind of phase one, phase two. We have like a couple of years of, uh, that we budgeted dollars for. For example, like Pleasant View up, updating the rooms, you know, so we kinda take these rooms this summer, the next summer we take these rooms. So I feel like part of that is in our.
Our part of it is, it's the five thousand things that get added to the list throughout the year that has to really be dwindled down to manageable for him and his team and contractors.
Give you the example, restrooms, I mean, the cost of renovating restrooms and making those changes, it's expensive. So like Breeze View right now, we have a couple of restrooms where we've had to say, okay, we've put them on the list the last couple of years. And we bumped them to a different year because we need, something else comes up as a higher priority. The high school, we have four restrooms that we'd really like to redo, but we're gonna wrap them into the new high school project. So it's an addendum or an option that we can look at doing so that gets part as that construction project versus trying to get it to work this summer. There just wasn't time to make those things happen. So yes, it's a very high priority, but if you can push it to another year and still get it done or wrap it into another project, could get the contractors on site. So there's a lot of conversations that go and play in terms of what we need to get done and how can we push it so that we have money available. Or something comes up that we need to also address that we weren't planning on addressing. So those things can all happen as well.
One of our worst ones is that Pleasant View. We have a set of restrooms that needs to get redone. Below it, there's a basement that has a lot of stuff. So when the restrooms get done, that down below has to get done and the roof also has to get done at the same time. So it's not just one project. Now turn into three layers, it's three. And it's on the rear of the building. So it's almost impossible to get to. Brian was quite shocked when he, he actually went down the ladder down into the underground of the building. He's like, how'd they get that in here? He said, that's the problem. We get it out. I guess, any questions? You know, another thing that's going on too is we've also been sitting in meetings for probably You know, and probably the other thing that's going on too is we've also been sitting in meetings for probably the last six months, talking about the Pleasant View project and the high school project that have come on too. Uh, we've had multiple meetings with the power company and different groups, just going over, what can we get for rebate money? What makes the most energy conservation? What is the most fiscally responsible? What can we use as far as, we, instead of putting, uh, can we tie into the existing boiler systems or we have to add new boiler rooms, stuff like that? So those have progressed fairly well this year.
You know, one thing before Leland ends, I just wanna go back and it's something that Seth had mentioned earlier tonight that I wanna address and question about, you know, what does the future look like? You know, things as we look at the Cody's, um, situation there, or I mentioned like the junior high. I think the biggest challenge we have sometimes is with our cooling systems and our HVAC system, the chillers running the cold water through and it's the heat, the humidity and making sure that, you know, there's no leaking happening at the valve level or the, at the joint level or the insulation is still intact, right? That the moisture's not condensing out of that and dripping out of the insulation. So we've talked about places like that, is how do we put that on a long-term lens of looking at when do we replace that insulation? For example, bring IITI in and they help us with that process moving forward. So those are some things that, I mean, trying to look ahead to the future is what can we do there too, so that we don't have issues? So that'll be a conversation we continue to have that we've already had since previously, so.
Also, some of the situations and things that we found regards to Cody and the junior high and exit of the high school too, is the installation of like the insul, of the insulation stuff. We've just found places where it's just poorly done. So, so now that's why it's dripping right there. It's, the insulation itself is fine, it's just how it's installed. A good example would be, let's say the chilled water line's going right through that wall. Well, they would just take the insulation up to the wall, no insulation in the wall, because it was just the pipe going through and then insulation on the other side. Instead of taking that insulation all the way through the wall. So, and how do we go back and catch that? Because you've got miles of pipe everywhere.
Those are things that we'll continue to work through and we've got a plan in place, so it's.
Does anyone have any questions for Leland? All the work with the construction. Alright, and then, uh, lastly is our enrollment update that Mr. Struse is going to walk us through.
And again, Adrian's question was, was spot on and a very good question. So on this screen right now is a copy of what is being handed out to the school board members right now, so everybody can see this. As it comes through, we'll look at the top section first. Kind of going through, right, right now what you see is kind of a three-year history, again, just kind of benchmarks. Twenty-three, twenty-four school year, looking towards in February, towards the end of a school year, kind of where with our enrollment versus the beginning, because you have kids who might be coming in or leaving. Twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, looking at April twenty-first is the number, I just had some dates that I haven't looked at. And then I put August twenty-second, which was of Friday's date as to where we thought we were, uh, at least at that time. Remember, October first is the, really the big time when we turn in our numbers, um, for the state and that's where our funding is based upon. But right now, as you can see, um, I'll go with the conversation we have been having over the years. You look at kindergarten back in twenty-three, twenty-four, three hundred and sixty-six, last year three forty-four, and this year three thirty-three with our kindergarten numbers. So you're thirty-three lower there compared to two years ago. So it kinda gives you where kindergarten was at. You look down the next level, first grade, we had a big, that's the four thirty-two, three seventy-six, three sixty-six, you saw it down in first grade there, or three fifty-eight? Need your glasses, three fifty-eight. But again, in the difference, what you can see, the, the difference column, when you take this year's first grade class at three fifty-eight as kindergarteners, it was three forty-four. So you can see that we picked up fourteen students potentially based upon Friday, um, as to where we are there. So in the far column, you can see the difference from the previous year. So approximately a hundred and thirty-two more students based upon April, if this holds true. Um, you can see the growth there, again, very similar throughout the eighth, the ninth grade, that is down two kiddos right now. And then the tenth to eleventh was down two also, um, in that building there. You can see the total numbers, if these were to hold true, the difference of a hundred and thirty-two more students overall from last year, the next set, we look at junior high, high school, elementary total. We'd be up about twelve from the previous year, give or take. So again, very similar to where we were last year, not huge growth. Again, large class going out, small kindergarten class coming in makes a huge difference. So, you know, there were years where you'd see that growth number being a hundred, we had about a ten-year span of that. Now we're kind of more neutralized, so we'll see if that projection continues. The next section I wanted to share with you tonight, there are kindergarten through sixth grade. Just wanna answer Adrian's question, this is perfect, how this played out here with, look at kindergarten. Kindergarten is one place where we reduced a section at Hopewell and reduced a section at Pleasant View. And we asked the question, was that the right decision or not? How is that gonna play out? And we started having these conversations back in March, April, May, and what does that look like? You can see at Hopewell right now, there are sixty-six seats, which would be the capacity, twenty-two per grade, three sections. We have fifty-nine students there, so we have seven open seats. So if we, I'll go to the next one, Pleasant View, that one has been tight. I think actually at Pleasant View, again, I don't have the exact number, we're about four or five students who we displaced to, how many? Just one is where we landed? Thank you, Debbie. Again, this is Debbie's every day, what she's living, every moment, every day. Um, one student that we displaced, so they would've been at sixty-seven of sixty-six. So again, taking two sections, that's forty-four students. If we right now, we have available forty-one seats across the district, we would've been at eighty-five seats open. So again, as tough as those decisions are, it was the right decision to make, because again, we didn't cut any teachers. Everybody has a position, but we shifted the positions. So I get it, we hope we bring those back, we have to add the positions back and bring more staff in. But that appears to have made the right decision there. First grade, remember, we also reduced a section at Hopewell and at Pleasant View. One was a retirement, um, one we moved to a different position. And again, you can see at Hopewell, we have one open seat, and at Pleasant View, we have two open seats still. So again, now at first grade, we have twenty-four kids, so that'd be forty-eight more students. So available fifty, that would've put us at ninety-eight open seats. Again, not where we wanna be from a staffing standpoint, from trying to be fiscally responsible. Why do I point those out? When you look at forty-one open seats in kindergarten, we have fifty at first grade, sixty-one at second grade, twenty-eight at third, fifty-two, twenty-two. And then five right now at sixth grade. So again, that, we try to live as close as we can, but thirty to forty is probably pretty typical, because it leaves you a few open seats at every single building. Um, what you see in the green, in third grade and in fifth grade at Forest Grove, those are the two sections where we had to add an extra section because we had so many students. So right now, if you look at fifth grade, there's twenty-two seats available. If we didn't have that extra fifth grade section, we'd be negative seats available. So again, that bubble's playing through, that third and fifth would now be a fourth grade teacher next year and a sixth grade teacher the following year. Uh, and both at Forest Grove, they've worked through who those teachers will be or what that will look like as we move forward there. So you can see what the average class sizes are, it can vary from school to school, year to year, look like. It really depends upon where we can move students, if they're opening, enrolling into us, where's the best place to have them go, uh, and to work with those families as well. So that's our numbers right now, again, potentially up a few students, we'll see where we are October first. This is just preliminary information as of today, uh, what we're seeing. But I can tell you today, Debbie, how many phone calls do you think we had on? So six new students yet today, so, yeah, just don't know, but good things there.
So, um, I guess something that I'm concerned about is, uh, if we keep these sections at Hopewell and Pleasant View, three sections. That just like trickles up to the next grade levels as far as, you know, now, uh, for the second grade, we're going to need, uh, three teachers. And if I'm a second grade teacher, I'm wondering how I'm going to be affected. And, you know, I guess I wanna give our teachers, uh, you know, I wa, I want, I want them to feel comfortable with where they're at this year. And I want them, I don't want, I don't wanna create anxiety that isn't necessary.
You're asking the exact right question. What we know as of today, we have a second grade teacher at Hopewell who already has announced this will be her last year. So we know that plays out at Hopewell. Question would be, what does Pleasant View look like? Um, as part of our interest-based problem-solving committee group that we have, where we meet monthly with our teachers. Chelsea's actually our PVA president this year. What you will see is there'll be thirty-five of us around the table and we will, that's one of our things to talk about. So come November, we know what this will look like, how we will transition a teacher to another location. Or January, we start to find out who might be leaving the district for some reason, how do we make some shifts there? We don't want it to be a guessing game. What I can tell you though, right now, with this information today, it would appear though, we would reduce a section at Pleasant View and Hopewell again next year. Hopewell seems to be a possibility, because we know the teacher's retiring, second grade, what does that look like? Four teachers there, what are they thinking, what might be their druthers, where do they wanna land? Is someone wanna teach at a different grade, someone wanna teach in a different building? Those will be all the conversations we have, so there is no anxiety about what's happening.
I feel in, uh, it seems like in other districts, there is kind of a order, like teachers know that they have a priority or they can, they can bid for that position with their seniority. I don't feel like, we don't have that type of system here, correct?
We don't currently, but that's one of the committees that we have agreed to form, is what is our process going to be? Because, you know, Davenport struggled when they had the bidding and bumping, it was a nightmare, I'll be very honest with you. So we don't wanna go to something we knew didn't work, so as a committee, what are we gonna put in place that, that has those processes in place, that everybody knows what the rules are?
Alright, well, I'm glad to hear that the planning is already in place and that discussions are.
It really comes down to seniority in a building, seniority at a grade level, what does all that look like and what's the most efficient way?
Do you have information on how many students PV lost to Joan of Arc? And how that compares to like Betnorth Nurse Scott Davenport?
Come after October first, typically late, our second board meeting in October or first one in November. We will share what we believe we know in terms of, um, open enrollment in, open enrollment out, homeschool students, private schools, public, you know, non-keropil schools. We'll try to share as much as we know at that time. And what those numbers look like. And we'll also, we tend to have about a, like homeschool, we do like a ten-year trend, open enrollment, we do about a five-year trend, so we'll have all that information for you then.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I'm just curious to know how that's impacting us with that being open enrollment.
Yeah, there's lots of choice, I mean, with Saint Joan of Arc, Cormdeao, Lord, well, the Lord's in Saint Joan of Arc. Thank you, Morning Star would be another one, so there's lots of options.
Any other questions regarding enrollment?
I remember when we had the conversation regarding consolidating the classes, classrooms in a Hope, in Hopewell and Pleasant View. Here's some concerns from some of the special needs families regarding how, um, their students were going to be, uh, placed. So maybe Jill, if you wanna mention something about that, how, how's that been going?
I haven't, you know, I haven't heard any more directly from parents and concerns. I think, um, I mean, if you look at our numbers without sharing like personal information about students, that it still didn't cause, like going from four to three sections. It didn't overload, I, I think the assumption was in not knowing all the numbers that parents were worried that all of a sudden going from four to three was gonna mean like the classes were loaded. But I, I mean, in every district I've been a part of, I've never, I mean, we still don't have any more than like five students in each class that ha, that are on IEPs. So it's really, I, I mean, and that's really pretty low, I mean, compared to, I'm looking at those of you that have been in other districts. So it's, it really hasn't impacted it. Um, I know that, um, at Hopewell at least, the special education teachers were very open to, um, working both with Rachel and Darren, the administration. And then the general education teachers too about, you know, how do we build our class list to make it make sense? Like where can the para educate, care support be? And how might we look at schedules and where we place students to have it make the most sense? So I have not heard back that there's concerns or issues, I don't know if the rest of you have, but I have not heard anything since the initial concern, have you, Brian?
No. Yeah, I think again, that's a kudos to Jill and Dawn and all the work they look at from a data standpoint. What does every single classroom look like, what does every single building look like? We have a master sheet that they're always up, updating, so we know we have the most recent numbers. And it's just using that information or students who might need English, English second language support, how many students do we have there? What does that look like and how are we sharing our para support? So it's a, it's a large picture when it comes to classroom lists and supporting people. And we try to stay on top as much as possible, so we're not just doing these willing things there. And again, as you can see, I, this information here, Debbie is literally taking phone calls every day and making sure that we're up to speed on where we are. So it's a busy, it is a busy place, but again, excited that everyone's back today. And I think this is just, again, not easy conversations last spring, but I think it was the right decision at the time. And we'll see what the future holds, and we'll keep watching it, trying to make the best prediction we can looking forward.
I'd just like to make one more comment too about the high school. The, the whole high school project, even though we're running a little bit behind on schedule, it's a major change. That West parking lot looks great, the whole look from the side, from the rear, from the football stadium, everything, it's really coming together nice. It really is making a whole change to that whole building. So I just wanted to leave that on, because this is a major positive.
Are we gonna be ready for the big game on Friday night?
We'll be ready for the big game on Friday night. So that's, I just wanted to leave that.
Alright. Alright, so for future dates, uh, our next board meeting is Monday, September eighth at six PM. And then, uh, again, in three weeks, September twenty-second.